All right, good evening. I'd like to call the March 24, 2025 meeting of the Greenville City Council to order. I'm Mayor PJ Connolly, presiding over tonight's meeting. First, I'd like to call on Mayor Proton Daniels for the invocation, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
Bow heads, please. Heavenly Father, we come before you in Thanksgiving to thank you for another opportunity to come together. Father, we thank you for our citizens. We thank you for their safety and well-being. Father, we thank you for each council member that we get to serve with, Father, that we serve in truth and honesty and integrity. And, Father, we pray tonight that decisions that we make will be pleasing in your sight. In Jesus' name, amen.
Amen. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Yes, sir. Mayor Connolly.
Here.
Mayor Proton Daniels.
Present.
Councilmember Foreman.
Here.
Councilmember Blackburn.
Present.
Councilmember Scully.
Here.
Councilmember Robinson.
Here.
Councilmember Willis.
Here.
All right, Mayor Connolly, you have a form.
Thank you very much. We'll now move on to approval of tonight's agenda. Mr. Manager, any recommended changes?
I have no changes.
All right, Mr. Attorney.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mayor and Council, at your desk, there's a resolution entitled Resolution Authorizing the City to File Civil Action Against Camping World Property Incorporated to Remedy a Zoning Violation and to Retain Outside Counsel to Represent the City. And I would ask council to consider adding that to the agenda and number it number 10 on the agenda.
So moved.
Second.
All right, motion been made by Councilmember Scully, second by Councilmember Willis. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay.
Motion passes six zero.
All right, in an effort to retain one of our fine employees, I'm going to skip the special recognitions. Chief? Just kidding. We're going to move on to special recognitions.
Or is this the ISO?
Yes.
There's two chiefs in question.
First, under special recognitions tonight, we would like to recognize our Greenville Fire Rescue for the achievement of the ISO Class One rating. I now have with us Chief Brock Davenport for a short presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Manager. Thank you, council. Good evening, everybody. Very proud to be here tonight. On September, in September of 2024, the North Carolina Office of State Fire Marshal evaluated our operations, operations of Greenville Fire Rescue as part of the ratings and inspections grading process. All fire departments across the country are rated on a scale of one to 10, with one being exemplary and 10 having minimal or no fire protection. I'm pleased to announce that we recently received our score back from the state and Greenville Fire Rescue has achieved an ISO rating of Class One. Currently, there are over 40,000 fire departments in the United States with less than 1% receiving a Class One rating. In North Carolina alone, there are 1,082 fire departments with only 33 Class One agencies in total, and only 14 that are both accredited and hold a Class One rating. Additionally, our department is the only one of this 14 that also provides paramedic-level fire-based EMS. This is a tremendous accomplishment for our department and our folks, and it's a testament to their dedication to serve the people of our community and providing exemplary superior services to our community. On behalf of this department, I would like to say thank you to the council, the city manager, and the city staff for all your continued support, and a special thank you to our community members. For without their collective support, none of this would be possible. Thank you.
I would also like to say congratulations. This is an outstanding accomplishment, and I'd like to thank the leadership. Most importantly, I'd like to thank all the men and women who make up Fire Rescue and the service that they provide on a daily basis. You are absolutely the best, and thank you for your service.
I would like to now ask Chief Ted Sals to come forward.
Motion to deny.
He needs to get a haircut.
I do not want to be doing this. This is, this is, this is hard, I can tell you. But I am extremely happy and proud of Chief Ted Sals, and I want to first read the script before I go off script. Chief Ted Sals, a 28-year career with the Greenville, with the city of Greenville began in 1997 after he served as an interim in the property and evidence division at the police department. His dedication and work ethic quickly led to advancement within the department. Over the years, he has risen through the ranks and holds various roles, including patrol as a special victims unit detective in investigations, training coordinator, and most notably as a longtime emergency response team commander. He was an integral part of launching the department's firearms program and most recently spearheaded the creation of the GPD Care Fund, a foundation established to support GPD employees and their families. Chief Sals is also a graduate of the prestigious FBI National Academy, a testament to his commitment to professional development and excellent in law enforcement leadership. He has received numerous community awards and accolades, including the NAACP Award. Chief Sals is known for his exceptional people skills, servant leadership, and remarkable ability to build strong relationships within the community. His extensive network and connections have proven invaluable in fostering partnerships with local businesses, community organizations, and government entities. Now, I'd like to really tell you how it is. This is the greatest leader I've ever had a chance to work with, honestly, and it has been a pleasure every single day to get to know you and to learn from you. And Ted is one of those individuals that demands respect, not because it's given, because it's earned. And he is a testament to everything great about Greenville, hands down. And I'm truly going to miss you, dude. I thank you for everything that you have done in the last three-plus years to build the morale of the department and put us in a position to have the strongest police department in the whole entire state, and that goes back directly to the leadership that you have shown day in and day out. This man truly loves this community, and there is nothing fake about this fellow. And it has just been an honor to be able to get to know you and to work with you. I will, I will think about you every single day as long as I continue to live. You're awesome.
So I will read a text message I got Thursday night from Mr. Cowan now. It'll be very different than what you just heard. I'm just kidding. The beauty of that, though, is we did communicate on that level, and we had a, we had what grew from a subordinate to superior relationship really grow into a friendship as well, and I can say that in all honesty. And he says he learned from me as a leader. You don't think of yourself like that when you're going through and doing anything. I've learned a lot from him. I've learned a lot from everybody sitting on this dais, and I thank you all for your relationships, your friendships, and your support. And as far as the community goes, we've got it great. Greenville is an awesome place to live, to work, raise a family, go to school. I look out and I see a lot of different people that I have become really close with. Everybody in this room, I can now look back in, in time and say, talk about our relationships, talk about the things that we did together. That's not, that's not fake. That part is not fake. Now, there was a lot that I had to work at, a lot of it that people think came really natural in terms of putting yourself out there and doing those things, but once you finally get over that and you realize that the large majority of this community support everything we do, and they are here for us like you cannot imagine. Give me a natural disaster, and short of the firemen, who always got something to eat, we will all be fed better than you can ever imagine. They know where I'm coming from with that. Thank you. The, the community comes out like you wouldn't imagine when we're in need, and they have supported us beyond what I can ask for. And now, as I've told all of them, as I'm moving on, our department, our staff, they still need that same support. The department heads who I've grown close with, they still need your support. So please continue to give them that support as they move on and rebuild it, even beyond anything that I have ever been able to accomplish. I have total faith that they're going to take it to a whole new level, and I'm going to have fun watching from the sideline. Thank you all for everything. It has been an awesome ride. This is not bye forever, just bye for now. I'm sure within a month or so, I'll be looking something else to do, so may call on you then. Thank you all.
Chief.
Mayor.
He would do that.
Thank you.
The public comment period is a period reserved for comments by the public. Items that were or are scheduled to be the subject of a public hearing conducted this meeting or another meeting during the same week shall not be discussed. Total of 30 minutes is allocated with each individual being allowed no more than three minutes. Individuals who registered with the city clerk will speak in the order registered until the allot of 30 minutes expires. If time remains after all persons who have registered have spoken, individuals who do not register will have an opportunity to speak until the allot of 30 minutes expires. Madam Clerk, our first speaker?
Yes, sir. We have one registered speaker, Mr. Don Cavallini. If you want to approach the public podium, you have three minutes to address the mayor and council.
Good evening.
Good evening.
So I come to advocate for community benefit agreements, and that's to be part of any development that might happen here in the city of Greenville. Community benefit agreements are stipulations included in the developer's plan to build and maintain, which would go beyond providing residential or commercial space. To more likely benefit the community at large, it's essential that these stipulations are authored by the community. I raise this now because before us, and I'm not speaking to the public hearing issue, but before us is a major modification of Taft's plan for downtown residence. And in this plan, believe it or not, and no, it's not explicitly identified as such, is a community benefit agreement. They not only provided $1,200,000 to refurbish the building that is called the Kupola and is now the home of the Time for Science Museum. Of course, it's Museum for Natural Sciences, I believe now, as it's called. But in addition to that, they said they would maintain, they would donate $20,000 for 10 years to help maintain this museum. That's a community benefit agreement. I would hope the city of Greenville would not only encourage developers, but require them at some point to have this kind of community benefit part to their development plan. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else that would like to speak during the public comment period, please come forward, state your name for the record. You have three minutes. Seeing none, we'll close the public comment period. We'll move on to the consent agenda. Mr. Manager?
Thank you, Mayor. Item number three under the consent agenda, a contract award for professional services for mowing and landscape maintenance at Homestead Memorial Gardens, Public Works Department contract number 12. Item number four, contract award for professional services for mowing and landscape maintenance at Greenwood Cemetery, Public Works Department contract number three. Item number five, contract award for professional services for microtransit shared ride software. And item number six, purchase of 15 new additional vehicles for the police department. Motion to approve items three through six.
Hold on a second, hold on. Councilmember Blackburn.
I'd like to pull item five from the consent agenda, and other than that, would make a motion to, no, wait, wait for anybody else to pull any items. But yeah, just pull number five.
All right. You going to make a motion?
Well, yes, I will, unless somebody wants to pull some other items. There's four items, there's six of us. All right, motion to approve the consent agenda as amended.
Second.
All right, motion been made by Councilmember Blackburn, and second by Councilmember Robinson. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay.
Motion passes six zero.
We'll move on to item number five.
Thank you, Mayor. Item number five, contract award for professional services for microtransit shared ride software. Call forward our Director of Public Works, Kevin Mulligan, for, to answer any questions in the head.
And thank you, thank you so much. The reason that I wanted to pull this off the agenda is because this represents a real change for our city where we're headed. And I know we've heard a lot about it on council. We've talked about it. It's, it's been coming for a while, but I thought it wouldn't, and, and not to ask you to describe the entire program, but just to say a few words about where we're headed, just as part of letting the public know what's changing and how it might work.
Okay, so this contract is for professional services for microtransit shared ride services with a company called Spare. And we put out a RFP, and we had about four or five companies respond, and we interviewed the top firms, and this is the firm we selected. So Spare is a software provider, and this software will, it's app-based, app or phone-based, and we'll be able to do scheduling of on-demand service. So on-demand call or schedule it through the app, and, and the van will come pick you up. We're going to start this in what is now Zone Four or Route Four, which is the area north of the river. We'll probably start that sometime late in the summer when our vehicles arrive, that would be providing that service. And so they're providing scheduling, software, marketing, customer service, cost of $82,000 in the first year and $61,500 in years two and three.
So will they actually advertise, do the marketing for this change? Or will the city do some?
They'll assist us with the marketing. Yeah, that's part of the contract.
Okay, and what, do you know what the name of the app will be?
That's a good question. We'll work on that with them. So their company is named Spare, the app won't be named Spare. We'll, we'll come up with what that name, whether that's, right now, it will be under, we have a current app that's, that's being transitioned right now to show where all of our fixed route buses are. We're going to incorporate that into that existing app, so it should be called Spot.
So just to kind of put it all together, this is, this is a change that the city is making in, starting with bus Route Four or Zone Four, that will allow people to have a, like a door to, like a door pickup?
It'll be curb to curb, yep.
Curb to curb.
Pick up at their house and bring them to their location within that zone, right? So it's not call and then anywhere in the city, but it's within that zone, and that zone will be anywhere north of the river or Butterfield. Bring them to Butterfield and then get on a fixed route bus to go to the hospital.
So this is a really big change, one that I'm really happy to see, and I hope will provide some flexibility for people who use our public transit, and that along with the extended hours, I hope will make things, will make our public transportation systems more user-friendly and more helpful for people.
Yeah, absolutely. Extended hours, I think we're finally looking at a date later this spring.
Okay.
Mr. Mulligan, can you provide a detail, just for the public again, what those extended hours will be?
The extended hours will be 6:00 AM to 8:00, 8:00 PM on Monday through Friday, and then Saturday, I think it's 10:00 AM to 5:00 PM. So I'll clarify Saturday. Just don't have that in front of you.
That's fantastic. That's a, all day on Saturday as well. So unless anybody else has some questions, I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion been made by Councilmember Blackburn, and second by Mayor Proton Daniels. Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay.
Motion passes six zero.
Move on to the next item, which is new business, which is public hearings. This is the policy of the public hearings, adopted by the city council. The petitioner or representative of the petitioner and a leader of those in opposition will each have 10 minutes. Persons following them will have up to three minutes each, with a total for each side and no more than 30 minutes. Initially, I want to remind those in attendance to extend the courtesy to persons speaking during the public hearing and to the city council during discussion. Comments made by members of the public are to occur only during the public hearing as allowed by the mayor in accordance with the adopted policy of the city council. There should be no interruptions of speakers or councilmembers, including expressions of support or disagreements verbally or by applause, as this is distracting and makes discussion difficult. We ask for your cooperation. Thank you. Mr. Manager, our one and only public hearing.
Thank you, Mayor. Item number seven, major modification to an economic development agreement with Taft Corporate Office LLC, a North Carolina limited liability company involving property situated within the city of Greenville, Pitt County, North Carolina, located at 729 Dickinson Avenue, Greenville, North Carolina, 27834, tax parcel number 20038. I'll now ask our city attorney, Scott Dixon, to give a short presentation.
Members of the council, Mr. Mayor, we have just a few slides. It should be pretty brief. So the original agreement entered with Taft was in July 6, 2022, as part of a larger effort with Stark and Ficklin Warehouse. I think many of you guys will remember that. Taft completed purchase of the city museum building for $1.24 million. They renovated the Kupola Building, relocated North Carolina Museum of Natural Sciences. They provided a 30-year lease at an annual $1 rate and made cash contributions in excess of $480,000 required under the agreement by the city. They also designed the Adler Ave Class A Market Rate Apartment project and submitted for permitting in July of last, or 2023. Due to COVID, inflationary economic conditions, interest rates skyrocketing, construction costs, all the projects kind of were stalled. So Taft and the city both expressed a desire and interest to continue with a modified scaled-down development proposal rebranded as Brightleaf Towns. Substantive changes to the previously entered development agreement are as follows: removing reference to the requirement of a parking deck, Stark Hotel Parking reduces the number of required housing units from 150 to 72, and reduces the number of dedicated general public parking spaces from 35 to 15. After conducting a public hearing, the city staff would recommend that you approve the proposed modification to the previously entered development agreement. There is no fiscal, fiscal impact to the city, and Mr. Taft is present to be able to speak in regards to any specificity or any questions you guys might have.
Thank you very much.
That's it.
Any questions for Mr. Dixon?
It's like my second time, I feel so lucky.
Hey, that was very good. Very good. All right, seeing none, the public hearing is now open. Those speak on behalf of the applicant may come forward. Please state your name for the record. The first person has 10 minutes. All others have three minutes.
Good evening. I wish I could have Mr. Cavallini come up here and speak for us again. That was a really compelling argument and, and something that's quite truthful, right? I mean, look, there, there are opportunities to tap public benefits directly to private development a lot of the times. Some deals are skinnier than others, but we certainly were able to make it work here. As Scott mentioned, you know, I did come up in front of you guys, gosh, four years ago now, I believe, and asked for the development agreement related to the sale of the former North Carolina Museum of Natural Sciences eastern branch location in exchange for us relocating them to the Kupola Building, not tearing down the Kupola Building. And we spent a lot of time and effort designing Adler on the Avenue. I think we were about $600,000 into design. We were really, really ready to, you know, pull the trigger on the project and kind of got caught between the rate increases and the construction costs, as they mentioned. We kind of let it sit for a little while as we worked through what we'd like to see done there, and now we're coming back with a revised plan that involves, again, less density, 72 units versus the 155 and no parking deck, so we would surface park this pro, this property. It would also include, as Scott mentioned, 15 public parking spaces on-site, and then we also expect to create some on-street parking because you're closing down a lot of the curb cuts that sort of crisscross Ficklin, Eighth, and Dickinson right now as well. So all in all, we feel like it's a pretty straightforward request. In a perfect world, we'd have loved to have done the larger project. You know, right now, we're sort of victims of where the, where the world is, where the economy is, but we look forward to getting this one done and, you know, maybe looking at a larger one just down the street before it's all said and done. So I appreciate your time, and I'm happy to answer questions. Though I, you know, spent a lot of time with most of you to discuss this.
All right, any questions for Mr. Taft?
All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Anyone else that would like to speak on behalf of the applicant may come forward. Please state your name for the record. You have three minutes. All right, seeing none. Those in opposition to the applicant may come forward. Please state your name for the record. First person has 10 minutes. All others have three minutes. Seeing none, close the public hearing. Open for a board discussion or a motion?
Move to approve.
Second.
If you have a question.
All right, so we got, motion been made by Mayor Proton Daniels, second by Councilmember Robinson, Councilmember Willis.
Yes, I have a question perhaps for our city manager. I'm just wondering at what point in the process the community benefit grants are discussed? Is that typically something that when there's a meeting of the minds, you come together and talk about that, or does the developer kind of initiate that or?
What, what made, what made this one a, a particular of interest is that we owned the property. So when we own a property and we are going to enter into a development agreement, we can have those kind of conversations. Otherwise, we would not be able to. But as spoken earlier, there are a significant, significant number of projects that we have that could occur on public property in the future that we will take heed of that comment on.
But typically, if we don't own it?
That's right. Exactly. That's right. That's the, that's the interesting situation here, is that we own the property, so in order to, for the conveyance to be made directly to a developer, then we were able to add qualifications onto that, and that's at the time that we would make those considerations.
Okay. Is it still reasonable to think, though, that we could still make that conveyance even if we don't?
Not if we don't have any, not if we don't have any consideration to give up. Our consideration was the property. Otherwise, if the property is privately owned, then it can be privately developed, and we have no, no way to add requirements onto it.
I got you. Thank you.
Councilmember Scully?
Just want to thank Mr. Taft for what you've done on this project for the, the science museum is such a great resource for our kids, for our whole community, saving a historic building that is beautiful and the perfect setting for a science museum. So just thank you very much for that good faith effort, not only bringing great economic lift to the downtown area of new residents that can afford to eat out, but also making a really proper science museum downtown for our whole community to enjoy for the future is really, was an exciting development, and so thank you very much.
And Mayor, I'd like to add one other thing. The Taft Group has a significant investment in the Kupola Building and the museum. Also, as part of that sale of city property, the city contributed $240,000 to the museum as well as part of that project.
Councilmember Robinson?
I just want to echo Councilmember Scully's comments. Thomas, you know, you're a local guy, your father is local. As developers, y'all have done so much for this community, and I just want to say publicly thank you. I also want to say to you and your partner, Dustin Mills, which I know personally, married at Davenport out there where I have a farm at, I know all the Lawrence Davenport crowds, I say that I want people to know what, those watching and those in the audience, that Mr. Taft and Dustin Mills are one of the top 40 in the country, top 40 in the country for affordable housing developers. Oh, whereas they're a developer, they're local guys from our city that I have the pleasure of coming up here, even though it's in District Five representing. I just want you to know, watching, they did 180 units on Arlington Trace of Affordable Housing for our, our community. 55 units over at Parkside Commons. I could go on and on and on, you know I could, and I know you've got. 55 units over at Parkside Commons. I could go on and on and on. You know I could. I know you've got stuff in the works right now. But I just want to say, when people question developers, this is a developer who's a citizen of Greenville, who is doing great things. His father has done great things in our community. So when we represent people, we represent developers. But really, developers are just our citizens giving back to our community. And he has done such a great deal in doing that. He's continuing the legacy that his father started in this community. He's been very, very, very admirable trying to do things back here. Now got dust in that crowd. So they're all local guys coming back to Greenville, trying to grow Greenville greater. I just want to say publicly to him and those who you work with, thank you for your developments to do private things that benefit you, you know, profit-wise, projects like this, but you have an unperiled record of working to get affordable housing in our community. I just want to say thank you to you and your group. I appreciate you so much as I'm sure my councilmembers do. So thank you very much for what you're doing. Keep doing it. Help us grow Greenville greater, as I always say. Thank you very much. Tell your father. Ask him about it, please.
All right. Any other discussion? All right. There's been a motion made by Mayor Proton Daniels, seconded by Councilmember Robinson. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say nay.
Motion passes six zero.
Thank you very much. We'll now move on to other items of the business. Mr. Manager.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Item number eight, presentations by boards and commissions. The first presentation tonight is the Recreation and Parks Commission. I'll now call forward our commission chair, Deborah Shepherd, for the presentation.
Good evening, Mayor Conley, Mayor Proton Daniels, and the council. I am Deborah Shepherd, the Chair for Recreation and Parks Commission. And tonight I also have my co-chair, if he was staying, Darren White. And I will be giving our annual review. So currently with our commission, we have seven members, and we also have our liaison, who is Mayor Proton, Monica Daniels. So within our commission, we have recommended funding for our Wrexham Park Department. And those fundings include the PRTF funds for improvements to Wildwood Park, Accessible Parks Grant funding for improvements to Woolon Park, and then also the Great Trails State Grant to help fund the connection between Wildwood Park and River Park North. And we also recommended name changes for the CML Cultural and Heritage Center and also the INES in Fridley Rivers Edge Park. And also, within our commission, we have helped build partnerships such as the ECU Joyner Library. In the picture, you see our story walks that's with Wildwood Park. And this features English and Spanish for community members. The great thing about our commission is that we are super active, not just in the boardrooms, but in the community. So one of the things that we take pride in is actually supporting the Wrexham Park Department. So we volunteer often. We support the events. And one of the biggest volunteer turnouts that we had was last year at the Little League Softball World Series. And we had an amazing time, and it also gives our commission a chance to see just how hard the staff works within Wrexham Parks. So we like to get really hands-on. And finally, we helped endorse the Wrexham Parks Master Plan just to help enhance and expand programs and opportunities that our community members let us know that they need. And we also support any ongoing departmental improvements that are being implemented by staff. And I just want to thank you all for your continued support with the Wrexham Park Department, which is an amazing department for the city, and it's been a pleasure to serve for the past four years. Any questions?
Thank you for your hard work. Any questions?
Just to commend the commission, I know that Mayor Proton will have some nice things to say, but the great commission and great people and outstanding leadership. So thank you, and thank you for all that you do in the community with your projects as well.
Thank you.
Yeah. I just wanted to say thank you for all that you guys do. You do work hard. I do see you in the community volunteering, sharing information on Facebook and ensuring that our community is clean. And, you know, Wrexham Parks is my favorite, even though we're not supposed to have favorites, because I don't think people realize what Wrexham Parks does and how much they give to the city. And so I just want to say thank you to everyone involved.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. We appreciate all that you do.
I did want to make a comment. Thank you again, Ms. Shepherd. I believe that everything rises and falls on leadership. And I know that our boards and commissions are going through a bit of a reevaluation. And kind of behind the scenes, I know that Councilmember Scully, Mayor Proton Daniels, I believe, and Councilmember Blackburn are involved in that process, and I hope that you would avail yourself to be somewhat of a model or prototype to be able to be studied as far as, because I heard you mention volunteerism and supporting public events, endorsing the master plan. And I think that that's the direction that we want our boards and commissions to go into, those that are serving, to really be involved in the community. And it goes without fail, it shows, so.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. And Mr. Art Design is awesome. Just wanted to put that out there as well, and his staff. They've been a pleasure to work with.
Don, man.
Come on, Don.
How much are you paying her? We know you're not paying her. You are amazing. So we appreciate all that you do.
Okay, moving right along. Presentation number two, the Multimodal Transportation Commission. I'll now call forward our commission vice chair, Kat Dale, for the presentation.
Hello, Mayor, members of the council, city staff. My name's Kat. I am the vice chair of the Multimodal Transportation Commission, and I am presenting today on our 2024 activities, but also giving you a little piece of what we're looking forward to in 2025. So first, an invitation to join us, everyone in the room, everyone online. We meet on the third Wednesday of every other month at 5:30 in the GK Butterfield Center. And our purpose is to advance and encourage multimodal options for community members and visitors of Greenville and provide advice and recommendations to the city council on issues related to public transportation, micro-mobility, accessibility, bicycles, pedestrians, basically anything transportation-related. Why is this important? It is so incredible to me how much transportation underlies so many facets of our lives. I mean, from what our cities and streets look like to whether or not someone can get to work or school, to whether that person can access healthcare or groceries. Thinking about, of course, like law enforcement and emergency responses and even economic development. But I feel like what is underneath all of that, it's really down to safety and it's about freedom. I think that everyone in this room and online would agree that we all want to be able to wake up in the morning, choose the mode of transportation that works best for us and our families, and know that when we leave the door and hit the road, that everyone around us and ourselves are going to make it to our destinations alive and on time in an efficient manner. But you all have seen the crash data. We've all been on our streets or read sober news articles. That's not the reality for our Greenville residents right now, but it absolutely could be. And I always say Greenville has amazing bones and amazing people, and I think we've seen that even tonight. I know that the council and the staff has been doing a lot of work towards facilitating safe streets as well as community organizations, our neighboring municipalities, advocates, lots of folks facilitating those safe streets and that freedom of transportation for everyone. So I just want us all to keep those two things in mind as we go forward. That's our shared mission here, right? It's all about safety and it's about transportation choice. And I think that really underlies a lot of what the MTC does and how we think about issues. So who are we? We are chaired by Arsenia Dixon, and then we have representation by Joey Austin, James Bird, Gary Finn, Kelly Gonzalez. Some of those folks are here tonight. I really like this group of people. They have such a diverse set of skill sets. We come from education. We come from law. We come from academic or medical sectors. We come from Wrexham Parks. So we all are linked by those shared goals, but we come at it from really different perspectives. I also want to give a shout out to our staff liaison, Liz Stalls, our secretary, Donna Kabachian, and then our council liaison, Councilmember Scully. These folks are also really important parts of our MTC team. And we do have a vacancy. So if anyone is inspired by this presentation, we'd love for you to join us.
Please let me know.
So what did we do over the last year? We participated in a lot of different things. So we were a really integral part of getting 13 new bike racks installed in our downtown and in our town commons. That was in collaboration with the ENC Alliance, but really, really supported by Public Works and Wrexham Parks as well. So it was a really cool multi-agency collaboration. We also served on the Washington to Greenville Greenway Feasibility Study Steering Committee. That was a series of in-person or online meetings throughout that planning process. We represented Pitt County at the NC Vision Zero Leadership Institute. Greenville is a vision zero community. That means we signed a resolution, or you all signed a resolution. And in that resolution, it states that we want to end serious injuries and deaths on our roads by 2035. So the Leadership Institute is a super cool event. We're the only state that does this. They bring together folks from all over the state and give people concrete tools to tackling that pretty ambitious goal. So we went last year in June, and we're going again this year, and I'm really, really excited. We actually have a member of Greenville's police force who's going to join us. And then one of our NC DOT traffic engineers from Division Two is also going to be on our little Pitt County team. And he and I are serving on a panel together. So really, really excited about this year's Vision Zero Institute. We also serve on Safe Kids Pitt County, their coalition. And again, transportation just comes up all the time. We're really thinking about how to keep our youngest residents safe on our streets. We also did a lot of internal thought this year on the MTC, so we revised our bylaws. Thank you to city staff for helping us with that. And we created what we're sort of calling a priority list for city staff and council, but also for ourselves. So we really wanted to create our concrete list of topics that could help guide our own meetings and what we should focus on or research or help advise you all on.
Got it right here.
Oh, my gosh. Amazing. Perfect. As well as create a really actionable resource list for you all, or just to really help guide our collaboration with you. So the next few slides, I'm going to go through a few things like that are early wins that you all are checking off already off that list. Super cool. And then we pulled out three priorities that we're excited about focusing on over 2025. So like I said, since we started this draft of this document a year and a half ago, these are already being checked off, including dedicated funding for sidewalk infill and for resolving ADA non-compliance issues. So thank you so much for those. Reexamining what our streets and developments look like through that creation of a UDO. Lots of traffic calming and spot safety improvements through our build project, traffic safety task force interventions, DOT upgrades, and of course, like adding speed bumps on city streets. And then we've already heard about transit tonight, but our transit staff have been like doing the most. And we are so excited about a lot of the upgrades that are coming online. So micro-transit, bus stop upgrades, the cashless system, new buses, these are all things that we're really thrilled about at the MTC. So in terms of areas of opportunity or areas of growth for Greenville, our first one that we thought about was really, how do we give residents that freedom of mobility by improving our city infrastructure? So the absolute lowest hanging fruit that we could think of was during all road resurfacing projects, adding bike and pedestrian facilities, or thinking about how we can stripe roadways better for traffic calming. So again, it's all about that safety. We're bringing down speeds. But we're also getting the sources of danger off the roads by encouraging people to walk or bike or scoot or skate, whatever they want to do. And to do that, you really have to give folks dignified safe spaces to do those things and encourage them to get out of their car. So it's as simple as just adding center lines and visually narrowing those roadways, or adding bike lanes or installing high-vis crosswalks. It could also be supporting, we are actually helping to create an application to NC DOT's multimodal planning grant. City manager and I have already had an initial conversation about this and hoping to bring you some more info on that very soon. That grant can help identify, prioritize bike and pedestrian projects for specifically the city versus like the broader region. And then also thinking about revising those street standard designs to encourage slower speeds and safer routes. And I know a lot of this is already underway with the UDA, which is super cool. Our second priority that we're thinking about working on is attracting, how do we attract new residents and businesses by prioritizing mobility and development, which we also heard about today. This is why it's like transportation's under all of it. So thinking about requiring multi-use paths or sidewalk connections, or adding stub outs between adjacent and proposed greenway schools, businesses, other developments. So thinking about how do we make those transportation networks really connect? And then identifying closing loopholes for developers and city policies and ordinances for sidewalks, complete streets, and connectivity. And I know some of that works also, sort of been marching along over the last few years and will hopefully continue as well. So some photos at the bottom here, we love this pedestrian access on Third and Roundtree Street. But we do have some inefficient road networks in Greenville. They almost geographically touch, but roads are actually quite far apart in terms of transportation. And then we've got a great stub out over here in South Greenville. And our third priority to close it out is thinking about how to connect Greenville to the broader region. So one thing the MTC is excited about helping with is encouraging greater transit ridership by helping to develop some social media content or doing a lot of outreach around how to effectively use transit, especially because our transit system is about to get a bunch of upgrades. And then maybe a little bit above our heads or a little more long range, but thinking about how can we leverage city resources and city assets. So that could be the MTC, but also things like land or buildings to support the establishment of passenger rail between Raleigh and Greenville. This is something we hear a lot about from community members. So maybe longer range, but I love trains, so let's mention them. So those were just three little pieces of our resource guiding document. But yes, if you would like to learn more, you can always ask Councilmember Scully or come chat with us. We are your advisory commission for multimodal transportation issues. So if you please rely on us, we're a resource for you. We have a lot of diverse skills, and we're really excited to collaborate and work with you more. So remember us, rely on us as a resource, and yeah, thank you so much for listening to me tonight. Do you have any questions for me?
Thank you very much. Councilmember Blackburn?
Not really a question, but just to thank you and thank the commission for the work that you do. It's hugely important. I can't say enough about the importance of having safe, protected spaces for people to walk. I know that Greenville, getting into Councilmember Robinson's territory here, some of us remember when Greenville was a small place and you just didn't expect to have a sidewalk. You drove in and then you might walk around downtown and you drove out wherever you lived. And we are a different place now, and it's been a culture shift. It's been a mind shift to help bring resources to having more sidewalks, protected crosswalks. Can't say enough about the need to further protect those crosswalks and have bike lanes and continue expanding our greenway system. And I guess the only question I have for you is really that would come through Councilmember Scully, but if we can be assistant, if we can assist the work of the commission in any way to help bring these things forward, I for one would like to say that I'm available to do that, to support that work and to bring these ideas to light. So thank you.
Yeah, we would really love to collaborate a little more. So I think that's why we wanted to create our document. So we had something that we could like hand people and say like, you know, these are the things we'd love to work together on. We could do some research or put together resources for you, especially on what other municipalities are doing. I think that that's something that maybe gets lost sometimes. It's like, what are other smaller or medium-sized or larger communities in North Carolina doing in regards to like, how do they have so many greenways, right? Or like, how are they dealing with safety issues in their communities? So something I've really learned from the Vision Zero Leadership Institute is like, other communities are such great resources. And we can do some of that kind of like hard work and labor of the research area. So yeah, we're here for you.
Thank you.
I was just going to say thank you to all of you that are here. It's a really great commission, the amount of work that you're able to get done. Meeting every other month is very impressive. And just the dedication and passion that you have for it. I know you rode your bike here tonight.
I even actually discovered last week, there's a bike rack behind the, like, behind the building. And I just found out about that a week ago. I was like, a mystery bike rack.
Well, the whole commission's great, but I just really admire you, your passion, dedication, and you're just so smart and able and passionate about safety and transportation. And you live it every day. Bike everywhere you go. So just thank you very much for your leadership on the commission. It's really exciting to see the list of things that you mentioned, and there's a lot more. And a lot of that is because of the commission's insistence and advice to council and city staff. So there's some really exciting stuff coming. We have money for sidewalks. We have a bench and a shelter at every bus stop. ADA help is coming to those bus stops soon as well. So a lot of exciting things that we have coming, but a lot of work to do as well. Still, we're still towards the top of the list of crashes in the state. We have a tremendous amount of work to do. So we So we've got to pay attention to what they're saying and follow your advice.
It's all about that safety for me. Yep, it's about saving lives.
Yep, literally. So thank you so much for all the work that you do. Appreciate it.
Yeah, Kat, I remember when you and I met, and really, I know the conversation we had standing there one day, your enthusiasm and also your tool kit or your skill set was there was not a voice for the multimodal to come up here and tell us what we need to be considering. And now you and the other members and our Senate Dixon leading it in the charge, which I know her very well, it's good to see you guys now actually having the information and sharing with us and for you coming down here today, because I know that's what we spoke about, because when you and I first spoke, there was really no voice to come out of the multimodal and get here and let us know what we should be considering. So to you and the other members on the board, and please pass on to the other members of the Senate, also, we appreciate what you guys are doing, because I know you're getting paid big dollars to do this, but I appreciate you taking the time to do all this and come down here, and I appreciate you and the other members of the board for taking up and really taking this to another level where we can have information actually shared with us as to what we need to do, because I think everybody, if I remember, is very passionate about the topics you covered tonight, and so I appreciate that. Thank you.
All right, any other comments?
Mayor, I'd like to make a statement as well. If you look at the two presentations we have, I'd like to echo the comments that I made earlier. These two commissions are basically a benchmark of how what we should be doing as a city and the fabulous work. You go back and look at last year's presentation, and it was a lot of items about what we should be doing, what we should be doing. This year, there's more about what we are doing and what we're moving towards, from appropriations for the ADA and the sidewalks, which will make, it'll be generational changes to our community, to the change that we're making to the public transportation. This is, these are examples of recreation parks and multimodal that when the commission's working directly with staff through the council, we can get some great things done. So thank you as well.
Yes, it's really fun to celebrate the wins with you all as we go, as we go along.
And I'll echo that, too. On my way here, I got a W N C T like notification on my phone, and I was kind of surprised when I saw it. It was a poll, and the poll was, what should Greenville be focusing on right now? And I was like, huh, that's a great piece of advice right there. And so I opened the poll up, not knowing what the items were that were on there. There were three items. One was the economy, one was safety, one was infrastructure. Which one do you think won? Or is winning? I think it's a current poll.
Safety.
Infrastructure. Sixty percent of the people that polled on this particular poll said infrastructure was the most important thing in the city of Greenville. So I think it reiterates a lot of the points that you made, and I think a lot of people lose the thought of what infrastructure really is. A lot of people think it's just our road system, right? We need to pave our roads, we need to get them ready. But it comes down to multi modes of transportation. It comes to safe ways for people to be on bikes, to be walking, multi-use paths. So it's important for us, and to even reiterate that even more, it's about our stormwater infrastructure, too, that people don't even think about sometimes. But there's a huge amount of things that we should be focusing on, and I appreciate all that you guys do on that board, because I know you're making an impact. One of the worst things that I get to see or hear about is when we get a notification that somebody's been struck by a vehicle, and it's incredibly disheartening to hear that. I never want to hear that. And so I appreciate all the work that you guys do to be able to stop that, come up with different ways to make our city a safer place. So thank you.
Thank you so much.
All right, we've got to be fair, right? We've got to be fair. All right, we'll move on to number nine.
Thank you, Mayor. Item number nine, Budget Ordinance Amendment Number Eight, amending the 2024-25 City of Greenville Budget Ordinance Number 24-038 Vehicle Replacement Fund, Ordinance Number 24-038 Occupancy Tax Fund, Ordinance Number 11-003, and Recreation and Parks Capital Project Fund, Ordinance Number 17-024, and establishing the Inspections Enterprise Fund. Call forward our Chief Financial Officer, Jacob Joyner, for the quick presentation.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. We have Budget Ordinance Amendment Number Eight for fiscal year 25. This will be amending the operating funds, occupancy tax fund, Recreation and Parks Capital Project Fund, as well as establishing the new Inspections Enterprise Fund, so that we stay in compliance with state statute. Item A will be establishing the Inspections Enterprise Fund. This will decrease the general fund by $1.3 million and increase the inspections Fund by $1.7 million. Item B will be transferring fund from the occupancy tax fund to the general fund for wayfinding signage. That will increase the general fund by $90,000 and have no change for the occupancy tax fund. Item C will be transfer fund from the general fund to match grant revenue in the Recreation Capital Project Fund for Woodlawn Park. That will increase the general fund by $100,000 and will increase Recreation Capital Project Fund by $600,000. Item D will be appropriating fund balance for the purchase of police vehicles, and that will increase the vehicle replacement fund by $231,000. Item E will be transfer fund from the occupancy tax fund to the general fund to support the North Carolina League of Municipalities Conference. That will increase the general fund by $100,000 and no change to the occupancy tax fund. Item F will be to adjust revenues within general fund to projected actual to support departmental operations. That will increase the general fund by $33,000. And item G will be to appropriate funding for the development of the Shell Building within the industrial park, and that will increase the general fund by $150,000. That brings the overall operating budget for the city of Greenville to $197.2 million. And we ask that council approve Budget Ordinance Amendment Number Eight.
Any questions for Mr. Joyner? Anybody want to make a motion?
Motion to approve.
All right, motion been made by Councilmember Blackburn, second by Councilmember Scully. Any other questions? Discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay.
Motion passes six zero.
All right, I guess we will kick this over to Mr. Attorney.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mayor and council, there is a resolution at your desk entitled Resolution Authorizing the City of Greenville to File Civil Action Against Camping World to Remedy a Code Violation and to Retain Outside Counsel to Represent the City. As the council knows, the matters regarding Camping World have come to council several times. Most recently, at the March 13th meeting, the council denied a city-initiated text amendment that sought a pathway to bring Camping World's oversized flag and Poland's compliance with the zoning ordinance. And council also asked at that same meeting to come back on March 24th with options regarding remedies to compel Camping World to come into compliance. The resolution provides that the city council authorizes the filing of a civil action against Camping World or any person or entity necessary to bring the above referenced zoning violations into compliance. It provides that the city manager or city attorney are hereby authorized to retain the services of outside counsel to assist and/or represent the city, and also provides that the city manager and/or city attorney and/or retained outside legal counsel are authorized to pursue and take all actions to compel compliance. That is the resolution. Any questions?
Any questions for Mr. McGirt? Any comments? Discussion by the council?
Got to have a motion on that. Motion's approved.
Second.
All right, motion's been made by Councilmember Scully, second by Councilmember Willis. Any other discussion? Councilmember Robinson?
I just, I've looked at the legal cost of this to the citizens of Greenville. I've looked at the longevity of the litigation process. I've looked at that our council needs to focus on more important things, and this will be a P R nightmare for the city of Greenville, because you will see again, and again, and again, Greenville, North Carolina sues to take down the United States flag. I will not vote for this motion at all. I support 100% the U.S. flag, and I will never be a party to a lawsuit that wants to take it down. So for those reasons, I'm going to vote against this resolution.
Councilmember Blackburn?
I would like to say that I've heard from, continue to hear from people who ask us to uphold our own laws. And that's it.
All right, any other discussion, comments? I'll just say, I'm not going to probably vote on this one, but I'm totally against it myself. I agree with the comments that Councilmember Robinson said, too. I think there's other things that we could be spending our time and taxpayer funds on, one of which is infrastructure that we just talked about. All right, all those in favor, please raise your hand. Those opposed, please raise your hand.
Motion passes forward, too.
All right, thank you very much. We'll now move on to the city manager's report.
So city manager's report, do we have the mega site? All right, here we go. I'd like to remind the community that we will be having mega site public information sessions. This is to talk about a future opportunity for an industrial park on the north side of Greenville, in between the city of Greenville and Bethel. And those, as shown on your screen, those sessions are scheduled starting Monday, March 31st. First one at the Pitt County Air Culture Center between 6:00 and 8:00 P.M. The second on Thursday, April 3rd, at 8:00 in middle school, again, between 6:00 and 8:00 P.M. Tuesday, April 8th, Welcome Middle School, 6:00 to 8:00, and then we'll have an additional session on Thursday, April 17th, virtually through Zoom. And we put this out there for our community, make sure that you have an opportunity to hear about, opportunity to bring a lot of jobs to our community in the future. And next, we'll move out to a couple of shout-outs. Mayor, did you know that this month is Women's History Month? And we are going to recognize a lot of important women here to the city of Greenville and what they mean to our community. I would first like to start with our Greenville Police Department. This month's first shout-out goes to the professional women of the Greenville Police Department's Wellness Committee. At the Greenville Police Department, wellness is not just a priority, it's a movement. With the launch of the Wellness Committee, made up of both sworn officers and professional staff, G P D is taking a multi-dimensional approach to health and happiness. Committee's mission is to create meaningful opportunities that engage not just employees, but their families, too. From physical and emotional well-being to intellectual, financial, social, and spiritual growth, the wellness team is making a lasting impact. So just what are they doing? They are focusing on family fun days, including Easter egg hunts, Polar Express adventures, and more, wellness walks and webinars, and financial luncheon learns, as well as fundraising rifles to give back to the community. None of this would be possible without the dedication and passion of our incredible professional staff. I would like to give a great big old shout-out to Lynn Poncic, Molly Muse, Jenny Pitchford, and Chelsea Nunnery for their outstanding contributions to make wellness a way of life for the Greenville Police Department. I had the opportunity to spend some time with these strong women last week, talk to them about everything that they're doing great, and felt the need to make sure that the rest of the community knew just how outstanding our Greenville Police Department is. Not just our sworn officers, as much as we love our sworn officers, I can assure you, that department would not run with the likes of the individuals you see right there on that screen. So I thank them for everything that they do every single day to support our city. And next, I would like to ask Valerie Shugar, come stand right here.
All right now.
Danae Alexander.
Oh, yeah.
Lisa Kirby.
Come on.
Leah Futrell, and Tiana Berryman. I want you all to come.
Yay.
So rounding out our commemorative time here with Women's History Month, I want to take a moment to recognize the women in the city that hold key leadership positions. We understand that women in leadership are faced with unique challenges, such as achieving work-life balance, overcoming stereotypes, and breaking barriers. These women do a remarkable job of facing those challenges while balancing their many duties and responsibilities as the city. We have Valerie Shugar, our city clerk, Danae Alexander, our assistant city manager, Lisa Kirby, our director of engineering, Leah Futrell, our director of human resources, and Tiana Berryman, our director of neighborhood and business services. Each of you represent the city well and are an inspiration to both our current and future women leaders within this community. I would like to present you with these roses. These were picked straight from my garden this weekend. Well, thank you for all you do for the city of Greenville.
Well deserved, ladies.
Very well. Come on.
That is awesome.
Yes.
Ladies, thank you ladies so much.
Good job.
They will never know the pricks I have on my fingers from picking them out of my garden. But seriously, I'd like to say thank you to all the strong women leaders we have within our community. This community could not run without you, and we thank God for you every single day. Mayor, all I got.
Thank you very much. Councilmember Robinson?
Yes, again, congratulations to Greenville Fire Rescue. Just think about that, one of only fourteen in North Carolina that have those awards. So when they come to your home, you know you're getting the top, which is what we need. I always call it tier one, which I've been told I shouldn't use that term because it's military, but what a great asset to have here in Greenville. I think it speaks volumes about the men and women who service in the Greenville Fire Rescue Department. Ted Salz, good graces, I remember meeting him 28 years ago in the courtroom and battling him like, who is this guy? Thinks he's something. And, you know, if you saw us in the courtroom, you'd think, God, they must hate each other. He has become a very good friend of mine, and Greenville could not have had a better chief. I remember when we were looking for a chief, I just thought he was the man for the job. And most importantly, I want Ted to know that those below you, they supported you 100%, and I think they were right in their wisdom of choice, and I'm glad we made that choice. And, you know, it's a sad day to see Ted leave because he's provided such good leadership, but all good leaders provide a legacy of those beneath him, because he leads by example. So I know he's got a great example. I know those who are beneath him, and I've talked to a lot of the ones that've been around for a long time. It's sad to see him go, but the department is being left in really good hands and in a really good place. So Ted, my friend, congratulations to you. I look forward to celebrating with you even more after tonight, but congratulations publicly. Would like to recommend, acknowledge the Pitt Community College. Got the top building program in the state. They're getting ready to build a big building, and so I'm so proud of P C C for doing what they're doing and growing to another level. I mean, I remember when they, I was a little boy, when they had the first building, it Senator Vernon White put there. For those of you who are older, may remember Senator Vernon White, but look how much that community college has grown and what it's doing for our community. I'm so proud of what's going on out there and the leadership, and leadership, there's some great women out there. Michael, you and I meet with them a lot, and what a wonderful leadership, which is a testament to those two characters. So congratulations to P C C, in particular, the welding program and all they're doing to put people in our community that with great jobs and education. Thank you so much, Mayor. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Councilmember Scully?
Thank you, Mayor. It's been a great meeting. We've heard about a lot of positive things that our city government's doing. Congratulations also to the fire department, to Chief Salz. Thank you very much for all that you've done for this community, for me, being a friend and supporter of the scullery in our downtown area, keeping us safe to do business down there. It's really been a pleasure to work with you the past couple of years, and for a very long time. He's always come in and been friendly and supportive, and I really appreciate his leadership. And congratulations on your retirement. We heard about the Wreckin Parks Department and the Multimodal Transportation Commission, two really fantastic boards within our city government who are doing really great work. I was really excited to hear about all of the positive things that are happening in our city. So thank you so much to those folks that were here, and please share with the rest of your commissions and boards that how much we appreciate your hard work. And there's still construction going on downtown. Evans Street closed today, but 60% of you really want some improvements to our infrastructure. So if that's true, improvements to infrastructure are not easy, and downtown is getting a great big upgrade. It's been a long road, and we still have a little bit more to go, but please continue to urge the community to be supportive of our downtown businesses. The Star of Dickinson is also going to close in the next couple of days, so two major intersections close downtown. And all that's to say, it's okay, because our city staff does a really great job. The company that's doing the construction's doing a great job creating safe spaces for us to move around the construction, to get to those businesses. So even when you pull in, if it looks different, it looks a little messy, just park and get in there, and you'll, and just believe me when I say that it's safe to get around, and there's ways to get into your favorite businesses, and those businesses are depending on schedule. So big thank you to everybody involved in the construction. It looks really great down there. We have an admitted students' day coming up, which is a day at ECU where seven thousand or so people who are considering coming to East Carolina will be in town. And it looks great preparing for that event. The trees are planted, there's mulch down, there's plants in the beds. It really, really looks fantastic. So I encourage you to come down and see the upgrades that are finished already, and continue to support the area through the next phase of construction. So thank you very much, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Willis?
Thank you, Mayor. Congratulations to Chief Salz. I hope that he enjoys his retirement. And I'll echo what my peers on council have said, in that we really appreciate his dedication to the Greenville Police Department. I enjoyed the presentations by our boards and commissions. It got me thinking, Mr. Manager, in terms of with our in-good-company Citizens Academy, to be able to pair our commissions and boards with what the city does. So when they go and learn about parks and wrecks, and they're learning about citizens that are volunteering their time to help with the improvement of parks and wrecks and whatnot. So just a thought there. And happy Women's History Month again. And, Mr. Manager, that's how you do it. I love what you did there. I saw you. That was great. Congratulations to all the ladies here that received their flowers. And there was a wonderful empower her event last week that was just phenomenal. I've heard so many good things about that event, and ladies wanting it more often, hint, hint. But just such a great turnout, and the information that was shared, and phenomenal work to the Neighborhood and Business Services Department. And I think that's all I have. Mayor, thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Blackburn?
Yes, thank you very much. I would just like to remind everybody that spring is a beautiful time in many ways, but it's also unfortunately when, the time of year that some of us in animal rescue call kitten season. And kitten season is not a fun season. Please, 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 if you have an animal, if you feed a cat outside that nobody else is taking care of, if you have cats, and dogs for that matter, who have not been sterilized, please have them sterilized. If money is a problem, vouchers are available for folks who can't afford the, the cost of doing that procedure. Not only does it spare the entire community the burden of kittens who are born and have nowhere to go and are probably going to be euthanized, and the same thing with puppies, but also it keeps your animals healthier. Unsterilized females are at a great risk of cancer and pyometra and other illnesses. So please have your animals sterilized. And along those lines, I'd like to shout out our Greenville Police and Greenville Animal Protective Services for rescuing five dogs from really abysmal circumstances where they had the heavy leashes, their pens weren't being cleaned out, and a puppy was witnessed being abused. So thank you very much. I imagine I've not ever been in this situation to have to deal with something on that scale. And I imagine for our officers, it was very difficult. So thank you very much for taking those steps to get those five dogs out of there. They have all received vet care, and I imagine at some point, they'll be up for adoption. And then last, I'd just like to say to my peers on the council, my women peers on the council, I see you and I respect you, and I can't tell you how much I enjoy serving with you. I know we don't always agree, but Councilwoman Foreman, Councilwoman Willis, Mayor Pro Tim Daniels, you all mean the world to me. And of course, my male peers on council, you do as well. But I just wanted to say that I appreciate, I know that your accomplishments have not been easy, and they mean a lot to me. It means a lot to me to serve up here with you. So thank you.
Likewise.
Councilmember Foreman?
Okay, well, it's been a long last week, and I want to elevate that we are experiencing a lot of insecurity in our community. Housing insecurity, food insecurity. Number one, I want to elevate and agree with many of the sentiments that I've heard from my peers. But also want to elevate that over the last week, in addition to other citizens having experienced insecurity, we've had three teachers, I've been contacted about three teachers that were experiencing housing insecurity, one of which was referred to us by Councilmember Willis. And we were able to sustain housing for that teacher. But my first call this morning, just after seven AM, was a local principal, of which, at her school, over the last year, we had housed a teacher in transitional housing to let me know that she had another teacher that is now homeless. I share that to say that I can be a bit nerdy. And so I tend to study things that have happened in our history and philosophies that will help us make our community, as Councilmember Robinson says, greater. That definition can be a little bit different for, for each of us at different times. But I was reminded today of a quote by Aristotle, because oftentimes what we don't do well is put ourselves in the shoes of others. Aristotle said, "The man who is isolated, who is unable to share in the benefits of political and, I would dare say, social association, has no need to share because he is already self-sufficient." And when we're making political decisions, or we're understanding that what we say, what we do, what we think, and the decisions that we make are impacting the day-to-day lived experiences of others, I would like to just reiterate that most of us, and I would say all of us in this room, are going home to comfortable settings. And we do need more affordable housing in our community, but that is not all of the solution. We also have situations where, when we're talking about development, and I'm always talking about responsible development, part of that responsibility is making sure that when we are using the word development, that we're providing livable wages. So inflation is increasing, prices are increasing, housing is increasing. But as we bring jobs in, number one, it needs to be enough jobs that is serving the people in our community that need them the most. But the other is that they're paying wages that they can afford to live where they work. I don't want to preach too hard tonight, but when we're discussing certain things, sometimes I get a little frustrated, because I know people that are struggling and suffering. And I want to remind us that how we think, what we do, and the decisions that we make are affecting the day-to-day lived experience of people that we are serving in this community. I appreciate all of you, even when we disagree, just like the other members of council have elevated. But want to keep us reminded that we all have one goal, and that is to live a good quality of life and to protect that option for the rest of our fellow citizens also. Thank you.
Mayor Pro Tim Daniels?
I'd like to start off, I wasn't talking to our clerk, no, let me stop. I would like to wish our clerk, Valerie, a happy belated birthday. And I would also like to wish a happy belated one-hundredth birthday to Ms. Curly Green. She is a staple in our community and has such wonderful stories to share. And she loves when people stop by to share those stories. Congratulations again to our fire rescue department. Thank you for the job that you do on an ongoing basis. You give us reports of the dangers that you guys go to, and we sit back and pray for you. So thank you for that, for that work. Our Recreation and Parks Department will be having a job fair this Thursday at the Drew Steel Center from three P M. to eight P M. Lot of jobs open for the summertime, full-time, part-time. Come on out. We have Be Your Own Woman Empowerment Brunch at South Greenville on the twenty-ninth from eleven until two. And there is the East Carolina Racial Healing at Saint Timothy's Church this Saturday. It's a jazz and ra, jazz and race symposium from one-thirty until five-thirty. And I hope to see you there. It will be catered by the scullery. Thank you.
It's gonna be great. All right. I'll be short, too. I want to wish a belated birthday to Ms. Green as well. I was very fortunate to get the phone number of Ms. Green. I couldn't make it to her house to present the proclamation due to a schedule conflict. But man, I will tell you one thing. Ms. Green, you are probably watching right now, because she told me she watches our meetings and pays attention. And we appreciate the fact that you do watch them. But my goodness, was she on the ball. She knew everything that was going on, and she, we had a great discussion. We talked about a bunch of different things. So I just want to say thank you, Ms. Green, for taking the time to talk to me. And also, happy one-hundredth birthday. How many, how many people do we come in contact on a day-to-day basis that celebrate a hundredth birthday? Pretty, pretty awesome. So she is a staple in our community, and we appreciate all that she's done to make our community the way it is today. And with that, I need a motion to adjourn. Motion.
Second.
All right. Motion's been made by Councilmember Robinson, second by Councilmember Blackburn. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those say nay?
Motion passed.
You're adjourned.
Let's go.